So they don't never know.
Oh, five o'clock we'll call the D D order. Let's start by the time.
Yeah, this year, there's a couple years.
The allegiance to the vibe of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to roll call.
Crandall?
Here.
Greenway?
Yes.
Mueller?
Here.
Shil?
Here.
Arda?
Here.
All right, we have a call, we'll move on to item number two, approval of agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda. The next one will be?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes.
Crandall?
Yes.
Shil?
Yes.
Arda?
Yes.
Item number three, approval of minutes of March tenth meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of the March eleventh, I think was the board meeting.
Ten?
Sorry, March ten.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Shil?
Yes.
Crandall?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes.
Arda?
Yes.
Item number four, another agenda, now is the time to bring the board members to disclose any conflicts of interest they have either direct or indirect. Hearing none, hearing none, we'll move on to number five, which is our consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda before us?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Greenway?
Yes.
Crandall?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Shil?
Yes.
Arda?
Yes.
Uh, item number six, now is the time for public comment. Shereen, did we have anyone signed up for?
No.
Okay. So then we'll move on to item number seven, good news and student achievement here. Mr. Decker.
Hi, everybody. Got some really fun things going on at the middle school here, so. Um, during the month of March, we had our student leadership, leadership, um, take part in leading. Um, a march for meals coin drive that we have every year, and this year we raised two thousand three hundred eighty dollars, that was fifty dollars more than last year, so I'm like, yes, there we go, so that's exciting. Um, the winning grade level, we got a dodgeball competition, which was fun to, and chaotic, but it was controlled chaos and, um, it it was a fun thing that our students did. Um, we have the seventh and eighth grade dance on April fourth that happened, you know, we had our SRO Officer Olson be our DJ, I I think, I didn't confirm with him whether or not he's the only school resource officer to be a DJ at school dances, but I'm waiting to hear back if that's, that's a real thing, but. Um, that was a great opportunity for our kids to have a little fun and reward them for all their hard work and. Upcoming events, we have our fifth grade tours, May first, um, our fifth graders from our elementary schools will come and get a tour of the middle school and see what every day, every day is like at the middle school, so they'll eat lunch there and get tours from our student council members, so it'll be a fun day for them. This week on Wednesday, we have Camp Med coming up as well, which is where the medical professionals from around the area come in and kind of give a little speech on to our seventh graders about what the medical professional careers are like around the area. The last thing is the YHS tours are coming up for our eighth graders as well, and our watershed day the same day, so that'll be a busy day, May first at the middle school. But a lot of fun things to look forward to and a lot of, um, good things happening at Wally Mass.
Thank you.
And Brad, I will talk about the high school.
All right, good evening, thanks, uh, for having me up, tonight I have some special guests here with me, uh, if you guys want to work your way up. Uh, I have, uh, our student, uh, council and the things that they have done throughout this year, I have, uh, Byron Jimenez, Nora Kroski, and Aria Bodan with me, they're here today. And I want to talk about not just these three, but our student council as a whole, they have done a fantastic job under the guidance of Mrs. Alonso, right here, right there, so. She's done a really good job with there, with them to get to their leadership, I do have to tell you a funny story, uh, if you guys don't mind me telling this, is that right Byron?
Go ahead.
All right, thanks, so unfortunately, our state student council convention was, uh, a few weeks ago, and it was going to be held in Rapid City. And these, our student council has really done a hot, great job of preparing for it, they worked, they had a lot of things in place, and they were really, really ready to go. And really, they go out there with all the school districts across the state, and they promote, yeah, and they were proud to send them. Unfortunately, there was some bad weather as you go across I N I D, and they canceled the student council convention. Um, these guys here, they came up to me and, uh, they said, said to me, like, hey, we got everything ready to go, all our homework's made up, can we go somewhere else for the week and, and check things out, I said, man, I would love to send you, but I just don't think we can do that. But I said, we're going to look at some things, and we're going to make some things right, because they have worked hard, um, and done a great job, so. Our, our president, uh, for next year is Byron Jimenez, and, uh, I'm going to let him turn it over to these guys to talk about the great things that they're doing, and I also told them that they're going to get a bunch of questions asked afterwards, and they're ready to answer those, right?
Of course.
All right.
All right, hello, my name's Byron, um, I'm the student body president at the high school, I started at the beginning of January, and, I don't know, it was fun, but I also like to be the voice for the student body, try to connect a little more with the teachers, trying to get their, uh, their knowledge into our knowledge at the same time, but yeah, this year we're focusing a lot on getting more of our base layer for our student council involved, because it was a little unorganized and everything, but this year it's getting a little bit better, uh, no, a lot better actually, but, yeah, it's always good. It was very unfortunate, because last year our state student council got canceled too, so I was vice president last year, so I was going to go to that, but it got canceled again. So, yeah, here's Aria. Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, we covered that, so. Do you want to talk about this later?
Oh, yes, uh. So, yeah, we had a convention kind of, we brought all, most of the elementary school up to the high school, and we had a bunch of different stations for them, trying to develop their skills when it came to student council leadership, and we had different stations that corresponded with different areas of student council, so that was fun, we spent almost fifth to seventh period, which would be around twelve maybe, twelve to three o'clock almost, so it was a great time, and I think the kids had fun too, so.
If you click through, there's some photos everywhere.
Yeah, here's some pictures, so we had vocab bingo, where we had, um, a couple of different words, and we had the definition that we read off with them, and they would ask questions, and then the second round, when it came to bingo, we would try to involve them with having them give us the definition of the words and et cetera, but it was great.
Um, another station we had is we had them make bracelets, and they said things on them, like leader or pride or something like that, and it was to be something fun, and then it was just also to like um, have them enjoy student council, and then like also encourage them to do it in the future, because it's a good thing to start young and then also continue it in high school. And then our third station was community service cards for the hospital out, over at Vera, um, we had the kids make a we made a large number of cards, I think it was around like two hundred cards or something like that, and all the cards, they were just hoping, like wishing well for all these patients that were in the hospital, and I thought it was really cool, because all these kids really enjoyed doing it, which is great to see, because they want to help out their community a little bit, um, so here's some pictures of that, and then my mom works over at the hospital, so she was able to like share all the cards to the hospital, and they really enjoyed them, and I know that they're still handing them out. Um, but yeah, I very really enjoyed it, so that was great.
Yeah, so there's a couple, uh, we took a big group picture after that, and it was just a great time, and we just want to encourage really for them to continue doing it through middle school and high school. So, yeah. And, uh, today we have Nora here, our treasurer, and our secretary, Aria. Sabrina's at golf and Paige is at dance, so they weren't able to make it, but they're, those are our main cabinet members, but we also have a we have a good, good sized, uh, council, so it's always great to see the people there. But upcoming, we have a blood drive on May seventh, which we help organize and volunteer at the high school, and we help give food out and uh, water to the people that just donated blood, we also have hope, our tours to the middle schools, as Mr. Decker said, which we always love to do, because you see the new faces, and next year, homecoming twenty twenty-five, which is our big thing, our big plan for the twenty twenty-five year. So, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it, any questions?
Okay.
Thanks.
That's, I got a comment as well, you all are juniors right now?
Yes.
And you'll be, so, I was a counselor in high school for thirty-three years, maybe you guys didn't know that, and probably not, because you all were in preschool the last year that I was a counselor in the high school, and I didn't leave now, because I feel fully old. Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, so just a couple of questions, with you guys doing the blood drive, um, who is your target audience to come and donate blood, the students?
Yes, our, our main target students, but we also encourage our teachers, like we try to encourage Miss Alonso, but.
And I tried so hard. Asking her out so hard.
But, yeah, our students are the, our main targets, so we go around, we give flyers out, during school lunch, we also have, uh, they give us a mascot costume, so it's like blood, and you go around giving information flyers.
So what is the age that they have to be before they can become a donor?
So you have to be sixteen, and for, uh, to, they also have a weight minimum for girls, I think, which is one twenty-five, I don't know for the you said one twenty-five, correct?
It's actually gone down, so now they changed it to one ten, so, yeah.
One ten, so, yeah, that's coming up, so.
All right, well, I don't have the years to service, but as a, as a ten plus gallon donor, thank you for organizing and doing that. And then, uh, can you just tell us a little bit about some of the fundraisers you do, because I assume that when you did the bracelets and those kind of stations and stuff, you had to have some funding for somehow, so how did you pull that off?
Um, so one thing we did recently was um, we did, um, uh, where during Valentine's Day, uh, everyone like during their conventions and student council, they sat at a table and we sold suckers, and I think we raised like two hundred dollars doing that, so like we don't need a ton of money for student council obviously, but it was like good to have that money to be able to do things.
Uh, another big fundraising money that we get is our formal dance, where we have, uh, we sell the tickets there, we help set it up, we plan it, and we advertise formal, and I'm pretty sure we get most of the income from the tickets we sell for the formal dance during winter.
I have a couple of questions, so really just one question, but I see you guys did the stations, which is awesome, I think that's great that you're exposing the younger generations to student council. What about each of you involved, and then like at what age did you get involved?
Um, I was, uh, I went to Lincoln Elementary, and I started being a part of student council wherever I could in fourth grade, and then obviously, I tried to run for like president, I know that those things in elementary school are really fun and stuff like that, but for me personally, I've been involved with this since fourth grade. Um, I went to Sacred Heart, so we didn't have student council in elementary or middle school, so I got involved my freshman year, um, my homeroom teacher just said like he needed representatives for something, so me and my sister did it, and we didn't really know what it was about, but I really enjoyed going to the meetings and helping out, so that's what, um, helped me decide to run for a position, so.
Yeah, I'm from Webster, so I started when I was in fourth, third grade, around there, and I didn't really do much in middle school, which I kind of regret, but uh, freshman year, my buddy Lance Danny Green really encouraged me to go to student council, and I really enjoyed it, and I'm glad I did.
Excellent, thank you, I appreciate seeing the leadership skills, and I love that you're sharing it with the younger elementary school students as well and high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, I have one more comment that I have to make on Byron, our, our president here, uh, he's, he's very talented, very bright, he came to me, and just because of our, uh, he goes, Mr. E, what are we going to do next year, not going to be able to go walk through Webster, I said, well, I think he was really trying to figure out if he could get out this year. With all the seniors, so, yeah, yeah. But no, that, they, these guys have done a fantastic job, like I said, with Mrs. Alonso and the whole student council, um, we're in good hands for our future with leaders that we have, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, okay, moving on to item number eight, about the two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five school calendar, Dr. Kendall, you'll give us some input here?
Yeah, so the school board has, uh, essentially three choices here, uh, one would be that you can leave the calendar as is, don't do anything with it. Another choice you have is to have the students come back for two days, make those two days up, as well as the staff. And then a third option you have is for the students to not make up the days, so their last day would be the sixteenth, and then staff make up the two snow days the following week, and I know that this comes up often, so, and in your packet, I included the Department of Education requirements, I'm not going to go through all of it, it just highlights, so DOE has requirements for kindergarten, on how many hours they have to make up, or how many hours they need in a school year, and right now we surpassed those requirements by ninety-seven point six days, in grades one through five, we surpassed it by twenty point one days, in grades six through eight, we surpassed it by twenty-four point six, and in grades nine through twelve, we surpassed the requirements by seventeen point two days. So, that just gives you a little bit of a picture on how many more days and hours we go than what's required, so if you're looking at, you know, where are we at with student days to make up, we're well beyond what the students would have to be in session.
Okay, is there any questions for Dr. Kendall?
Okay.
This is an action item, so entertain a motion on which, um, decision that we want to go with.
I move that we, I'm sorry, I move that we use the third option, where we, the students win on the sixteenth of May, and then the teachers will come back on the nineteenth and twentieth to make up the days that they were, they were, had not been for no case. So to, I just want to clarify for that, uh, Mr. Crandall, so if you're looking at draft two, that would be that the teacher workdays would be May nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and the in-service day on the twentieth. And that would include the two makeup days.
So that, that adds two days in?
Yes.
Yep.
And that's draft two.
That's draft two, right.
I was draft three, sorry, I'm, I'm.
I was confused.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a, and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Crandall?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Shil?
No, I would favor as is.
Sarada?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go on to item number nine, school board election, Shereen, do you want to take this?
This is just, this is making the canvas, you guys are, this is an canvas of the results, and it's just recommended, recommended action of that. Um, don't we read that, or do you want to read it? Sarada's the action? Make a motion. Okay.
I will make a motion that we approve the school board election results indicated with Levy under sign, Kathy Greenway, Sarah Sarada, Terry Crandall, Jacqueline Mueller, and Jordan Shield appointed as the board canvassers because of our positions on the governing board and the jurisdiction of the Yankton School District. Sixty-three dash three for the school board member election held on the eighth day of April twenty twenty-five. Hereby certified that the foregoing is true abstract of the votes cast in the jurisdiction of the Yankton School District sixty-three dash three at the election as shown by the return certified to the person in charge of the election. We further find and declare that Justin Prick and Sarah Grant, having received a majority of all votes cast in said election for members of the school board, are duly elected for a period of three years.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Greenway?
Yes.
Shil?
Yes.
Crandall?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Sarada?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item number ten, social studies curriculum.
Are we almost finished, we're almost to the finish line, right?
We are at the finish line, so in March, I presented the recommendations for the social studies instructional resources for all grades, K twelve. Um, first and foremost, always thank you to the committee members who dedicate a lot of time for the review, a lot of analysis into the, um, standards and into those resources, and they do make the best recommendations for our students, uh, to continue their academic growth. The materials that were chosen are aligned to our newly updated twenty twenty-four state standards, they emphasize critical thinking and inquiry, diverse representation of voices and perspectives, as well as the ability to connect historical content with students' lives and the world around them. The resources have been budgeted for purchase during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year with implementation planned for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. Uh, they have been on public display for the past thirty days and open to comment, I personally have not received any comments, nor have our department chairs, middle school, high school, um, as well as any elementary teachers that would have reached out to me, therefore, on behalf of the social studies committees, I recommend the purchase um, and adoption of the instructional materials that were presented at the March board meeting. Any questions?
Sorry.
Um, just one question, can you just remind me again, um, so, thank you, I know that there was a lot of work and time involved in that. When does that come up again for that review?
Every seven years, social studies was actually eight, um, during COVID, we extended our ELA review and pushed back the the social studies review by one year, so we're eight years out from social studies.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, sir, it's, anyway, thanks, go ahead, um, there's been a lot of talk about the curriculum review and on the state levels, and gee, in your mind, how much has that affected what we've done here locally?
Anytime the standards are drastically changed, that makes a lot of extra work for our teachers, of course, because we have to dive back in really in depth and detailed, so the social city standards did have some more drastic changes than we typically see, um, in a revision, our state standards are revised by a committee of teachers, administrators across the state, um, every seven years, I think it is two at the state level, um, we just don't typically see that big of a change like we did with social cities, so we did spend a lot of extra time last school year to go through those standards, making sure we well understood them, and then when they have big revisions in standards, they also affect our course outlines, it made an impact on our middle school and high school most significantly, um, just in the, what we teach at each grade level, and then changing some of our course offerings at the high school as well.
Just, I mean, I know this one, because of the state standards, it has been such, it's been a little bit more high profile, um, I know we've had books on the review for at least a month, have we had any, have you had any input from community or parents or reps or states or anything like that, anybody in the state?
No, um, a lot of our changes were, of course, middle school, high school, um, more in scope and sequence, we were already covering a lot of that historical timeline. That elementary, we, the state did provide a resource that is written specifically for our state standards, because there is not anything in publishing that would meet those standards otherwise, um, so that's been well known for a while, um, a lot of extra meetings, yes, on our part to understand that material, but no specific comments beyond, um, the parents that were on our committee.
Okay, and I do know that some of the career, or some of the resources that you use actually had, did the research about our state standards too, and some of the textbooks and everything, and kind of provide a guidance, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we weren't just, you, it wasn't just outflailing about trying to figure out how we're going to work this out, it's really done pretty meticulously, so. It's all discipline to me always, that we don't have as many people reviewing the documents, and there's so much work that goes in behind it, and often some, you know, some criticism that follows about what we're doing in the classroom, when it's really transparent about what it is in our curriculum, just my little input there.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
So just maybe one other comment about the social studies, um, standards and the curriculum, we were opposed, the school district, as most of you know, that when a lot of these standards came out and they made the changes, we went on record to oppose those, because we had actually surveyed our parents, we actually had a really good return on our survey, and parents were in agreement with us, that there were many of those standards that we just did not think were, uh, really appropriate for grade levels, and so, um, but we moved forward because the state board of education adopted those, and like any other school district, we're going to do what is finally adopted, and we have done that. Um, I would have you comment briefly about all the books in the back that came along with that.
Sure, um, so a lot of those standards that were more challenging to review were at the elementary level, just for developmentally appropriate, whether it be topic driven or the amount that they're required in the verbiage of, um, memorization of different standards, as we reviewed the curriculum, because those standards at the elementary particularly are so different than what we previously had, uh, the state did provide, um, a company that they worked directly with as well as providing resources for the next several years, uh, Studies Weekly, they provided the direct work with that company to write a curriculum that mirrors our standards completely, uh, very appropriate, it's delivered in a, um, in a manner or a format that is developmentally appropriate for our students, so the committee was more positive about that, um, as well as providing a plethora of extra books supplemental that go along with, um, each grade level, so kindergarten has about ten or eleven different read aloud books, and then first grade has some read aloud, and then they move into some shared, uh, class sets as well, I know Dr. Kendall reviewed one of them and thought highly of the book, so the books that were selected and the final product that came out for the elementary level, we are pleased with, even though we started kind of in a more negative place.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, this is an action item, so I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve the recommended high school's social studies curriculum materials.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Shil?
Yes.
Crandall?
Yeah.
Greenway?
Yes.
Sarada?
Yes, okay.
Here, just, I'm sorry, just for clarification, it's all, it's all curriculum materials.
Yeah, I wondered about that when I saw that, it says it's your high school, and so.
So it's, it's. So it's, it's the change.
She didn't go back and, and like, thank you for picking that up, because I, I looked down at that too, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
So K twelve, motion to approve the recommended K through twelve social studies curriculum materials.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion on this, and have that, we'd just like that to be, um, changed in our agenda, but, okay. So hearing none, roll call please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Shil?
Yes.
Crandall?
Yeah.
Greenway?
Yes.
Sarada?
Yes, okay, now moving on to our, what we consider good news, um, Webster School, results for the bids for the Webster School property, Shereen, do you want to
give us some background information on this?
Well, it's pretty exciting, we got two bids, I was pretty excited about that, um, and they're pretty decent, uh, so, um, we advertised it, went through the whole process, and two of them sent us two different bids, I mean, one was for eleven thousand one hundred, and one was for forty-five hundred. So, pretty exciting that we're able to successfully close that, you know, kind of sell that and do what we were planning on doing with that, so.
Uh, free champagne and charades.
Yeah.
Dr. Kendall, do you have a comment?
Yes, I would, so, I did do a couple of phone calls, um, to two different districts, one in, uh, Minnesota, or one in Iowa, and one in Nebraska, because the person who's purchasing Webster School also bought school properties in those two states. because the person who's purchasing Webster School also bought school properties in those two states. And so I spoke with the superintendents of those two school districts. And then the one in Nebraska, they are planning to convert that, I think it's an old elementary school, into affordable homes, housing, apartments of some kind. So that community is really excited about that. And then in Iowa, the same person purchased, um, property there and in the end ended up reselling it to a local contractor who's wanting to do something with the school facility. And then I did reach out to a school in Minnesota and they had not purchased school property there, but some other property and I didn't get all the details, but the point of it is, kinda did a follow-up on who the person was and, um, sounds like his company is really excited about doing this here in Yankton. And I would also say this, that we had some preliminary estimates to tear down Webster School if we never got it sold. And at some point, that would probably have to happen. And those estimates were between four and five hundred thousand dollars. And so this is a really great deal to celebrate here. And if they can repurpose that facility, it's even better. So, uh, Shreem and I would highly recommend the school board's services and let's make the deal.
Yeah, I think the, obviously the, the positive here is just the cost savings that we would have had if we would have had to take care of the building ourselves, so. Okay, this is an action item. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the, the high bid from Southwork Premier Properties for eleven thousand one hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Is there any more discussion? Other than just.
One thing, do you have any idea specifically what they plan to do with it or what direction they'll be in? Uh, um, no, no specifics. Um, that, I don't think they, he got into any detail about what they're going to do with it, but, um, hopefully they repurpose it and do something good for the community. And again, they sound like they're, they've done that in other communities. And I only checked on those three, but I know that they've purchased properties across the country and have either redeveloped or sold to another contractor to do something. So I'm feeling pretty good about it all.
I say, I appreciate that research when you, when you sent, sent that with that and just to know that, um, they have tried to repurpose and do what the state kind of left there and also as Sarah said, the, the savings along with what it could potentially cost the district if we didn't get it saved, so.
And then, I don't know why this came to mind, but while I was doing this, you know, his, his ownership company, Southwork, and I don't know for all of you that used to watch the Dallas series. I got that song in my head and I just thought, this is gonna be a good deal. My God, she is.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to go, uh, to what Jacqueline brought up. Appreciate you going and doing that research. The last thing we wanted to do was have somebody come in there that we weren't sure of their motives. But I, I think the most positive thing is it just won't be sitting there as a light to the city either, that we have someone owning it, going to take ownership to it and, um, I think it's, it's a win-win as far as I'm concerned. And it's, it's, it's even a bigger win that it's no longer going to be our issue, especially at this point, I'm guessing. Alright, so this is an action item. I will entertain a motion.
And done.
Oh, that's right, we're all done, okay. I was just excited. Roll call, please. Crandall?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Okay, um, item number twelve, executive session.
I make a motion that we move into executive session for student due South Dakota qualified law one dash twenty-five dash two, item number four.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Greenway?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Crandall?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
There is a possibility of action on this item. So we are in executive session. I declare us out of executive session. We're now under regular session. And we will go to item number fourteen, action on executive session. We do have an action.
I move the, uh, the motion to declare that negotiations between the district and the Yankton Education Association have reached an impasse and to direct the board chair to deliver a written statement declaring an impasse to the YDA representative.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a, uh, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Crandall?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Um, and then item number fifteen is dormant. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Those both saying aye, um, it does, it does pass and we are adjourned. We got a good training.